Hi everyone, it's Tereka, also known as One Dope CPA in the internet streets and I am back with another video. This video was created to essentially go over the method that I use to study the CPA exam using the AICPA blueprint. And if you watched my initial video on how to stop failing the CPA exam, then you know I have a soft spot in my heart for people who are struggling to pass the exam. And that is my core audience and who I make my videos for. If you haven't watched that first video, I highly suggest that you go back so that this slide will make sense to you. But essentially, the number one reason that I found for failing the CPA exam is due to lack of understanding. Sure, you can solve your problems, you know the key terminology and definitions, you know the elements of the key concepts, but you still do not understand the concepts. But no worries, I am here to help you put everything together and eventually pass the exam. And my whole purpose of making this video is to assist you with learning and studying more effectively, help you gain a complete and total understanding of the concepts, help you regain control of your life back, no more studying for hours on end and still failing, and to present the information in a practical way using everyday examples. And ultimately, to help you become a CPA and in turn, in a very small way, assist with the CPA shortage. Okay guys, so the point of this video is to teach you how to pass the exam using the blueprints. And if you don't know what the blueprints is, no worries, I'm gonna tell you now. The blueprints are essentially a resource that's going to teach you what is actually on the exam, how the material is weighted, and what you need to know to pass the exam. Right now, we are currently still under the blueprints that went into effect on July 1st of 2021. But as you can see here, there are new blueprints that are set to go into effect on January 1st of 2024. In this study session, we're going to be using the blueprints that are currently in effect as of July 1st of 2021 because it's 2023. So I just want to make sure I'm using the accurate document. Okay, so these are the current blueprints. As you can see over here, it says effective July 2021, and they are still in effect as of this date. And the way that you will find these blueprints is by just doing a Google search. You can search AICPA exam blueprints and it'll usually populate results that will lead you to the blueprints. Or you can go to the AICPA exam website by typing in us.aicpa.org and searching for the blueprints that way. So the blueprints are going to give you every single thing that you need to know. Here, you get your content areas, area 1, 2, 3, and 4. It's gonna tell you, you know, the skill allocation and what you need to be able to do. You need to be able to evaluate, do analysis, application, and remembering and understanding. You wanna go back and just spend some time just really reading the blueprints and pay close attention to the weight of the content areas. So just looking at this, you know that area 3, performing further procedures and obtaining evidence, is the most heavily weighted area, followed by area 2. So you wanna make sure that if you are short on time, that you spend most of your time focused in on these two areas. And you also want to look at the skill allocation. So, application is 30 to 40%, next is remembering and understanding. So you wanna make sure that above anything, you can actually apply the concepts that you learned and that you remember and understand. In today's lesson, we are going to focus in on area 1, which is Ethics, Professional Responsibilities, and General Principles. This area is weighted at 15 to 25% of your overall score. And we are focusing in on A, Nature and Scope, number 1, which is Nature and Scope Audit Engagements. You'll notice that the check mark is under remembering and understanding. So that immediately lets us know that we will need to remember and understand. What do we need to remember and understand, you may be asking? The representative task. Under the representative task is telling us exactly what we need to remember and understand. Or if you scroll down and you look down here at B, it has application. It's gonna tell you exactly what you're gonna need to know how to apply the concepts to. But for today's lesson, we are going to be needing to remember and understand the representative task for identify the nature, scope, and objectives of the different types of audit engagements, including issuer and non-issuer audits. So as we continue along, just keep the representative task in the forefront of your head because that's what we'll be learning. Okay, so if you saw my last video, then you know that this slide is pretty familiar. It's just the candidate journey map that I came up with essentially to tell you what you need to do and how to do what you need to do to pass the exam. I have four key components that I think you need to do to pass the exam, and today we're gonna be looking at three. The three elements that we'll explore in today's lesson are ensure full understanding, learn and study, and go the extra mile. And the way that we're going to do those elements are by knowing the key terminology, knowing the elements of the key terminology concepts, and obtaining understanding. And the way that we're gonna obtain an understanding today is by reading. There's gonna be some items that I'll show on the screen that I want you guys to go back and read and watch lectures. So I would say my video is kinda like a little mini lecture, but outside of what I'm telling you today, I also want you to go back and if you have a CPA exam course, to go back and watch those courses and just line up what you learned today with what's in the course. Because what you'll find is, most of the courses have a blueprint in them if you look at your resources. And when you look at the blueprint and the cross-reference for your course, you're gonna see that everything is just scattered. And that's part of the reason why I was so confused because the blueprints and the course, they didn't just line up and follow each other. So I was pretty lost and confused because I'm a very linear learner. So yeah, go back and find the information within your course that you need that lines up with what we're gonna learn today for the blueprints. And going the extra mile, we are going to take several looks at things from the AICPA, the blueprints being one of them. There will be YouTube videos that I want you to watch and articles from AICPA that I want you to read. So let's get started. Okay, so before we dive into the lesson, let's first spend some time establishing a solid foundation. Call me slow, but when I initially started studying for the CPA exam, the concepts of nature, scope, and objectives did not click in my head. I think this was mainly because the courses that I bought, notice I said courses, as in more than one. The courses that I bought, they didn't bother to spend the time to break down the basics on a very elementary level. Instead, they jumped right into the different types of statements and audits, leaving me completely lost and confused. I literally had no clue what the meaning of nature was. I kinda knew scope just based off of managing projects in my day job. And I thought the objective for an engagement was the same as the auditor's objective. And guess what? I thought wrong. I was a whole little clown out here, okay? I naively went along reading and quote-unquote studying without having a real understanding of what I was even supposed to be studying. It also didn't help that the information presented in the courses wasn't presented in direct alignment with the AICPA blueprints. So I was studying a bunch of information I already didn't truly understand, and I was overwhelming myself with information that I did not need. I spent a bunch of hours learning information that never appeared on my exams, and I failed over and over and over and over and over and over again. I spent a lot of money, guys. I failed a lot of times. And eventually, those failures led me into a downward spiral of just feeling helpless, alone, inadequate, and ultimately depressed. And I think I felt like that because I was a person who was checking off all the boxes. So in each of the courses that I purchased, I was scoring in the 90 range. I was scoring in the 90 range on all of my little sample tests. But when I would go and sit for my actual exam, I would bomb and I could not figure out why I wasn't passing and B, why the stuff that I was studying was not appearing on my exam. So ultimately, it's just my goal to prevent someone else from going down that same path by assisting with presenting the information in a clear and concise way. So for the sake of leaving no CPA exam candidate behind, here are the foundational information. Well, here is the foundational information that I searched out because my courses unfortunately did not provide them to me. And also, just a little caveat, I do not know how to edit videos. So if I miss a, I misspeak, or if I'm showing you a screen that's not the screen that you're supposed to be looking at, just bear with me, just doing the best I can, but we're gonna get through it together, okay? So let's start with the basis of the basic. What is an audit? According to the Google Search Dictionary, an audit is an official inspection of an individual or organization's accounts typically by an independent body. When performing audits, we need to identify the nature, scope, and objectives of the different audit engagements. Nature is the type of test to perform during the audit. The scope is the procedures to follow for the audit. And objective is the purpose of the audit. The key thing to remember so that you can be better than me and not like me is to remember that the engagement objective will be different with each type of engagement, and it is not the same as the auditor's objective when they're performing an audit. So now that we know what the nature, scope, and objective mean, we now need to define the different types of audit engagements. There are three common types of audit engagements. Compliance audits, operational audits, and financial statement audits. Compliance audits are performed to determine if specific laws and regulations are being adhered to. Therefore, the objective of a compliance audit is to determine if the entity is following laws and regulations. Compliance audits are usually performed by regulatory organizations or governmental organizations. But they can also be performed by CPAs as well. So an IRS audit would be an example of a compliance audit. And one way to think and remember what a compliance audit is, is to think about what it's for. So a compliance audit is to make sure that the entity is complying with the laws. Operational audits are performed to determine if the entity is operating according to its internal controls, policies, and procedures, and to evaluate the entity's performance. An example would be auditing a specific department and organization to determine if the goals established for the department were met. Operational audits are usually performed by internal auditors. But CPAs and governmental auditors can also perform operational audits. And again, to remember what an operational audit is, think about what it's for. It's for pretty much auditing the operations of an organization. And who handles the internal controls and making sure that people within the organization are adhering to the policies, internal auditors. Financial statement audits are performed to determine if the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with the applicable financial reporting framework. Pause. So if you're anything like me, I know you're thinking, what is a financial reporting framework? Well, our good friends over at the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, also known as the AICPA, they say that a financial reporting framework is a set of criteria used to determine measurement, recognition, presentation, and disclosure of all material items appearing in the financial statements. Again, if you're anything like me, you're thinking in your head, well, what does that mean? No worries, my friend, I got you. It basically means that there are a set of standards to use to determine how to format financial statements and what information to include in the financial statements. Okay, so stay with me here. An applicable financial reporting framework can either be a general purpose framework or a special purpose framework. So in other words, the financial statements can be presented in a general way to meet the needs of a lot of different users. The most notable general purpose framework is GAAP, Generally Accepted Accounting Principles. The other framework is a special purpose framework, which is a framework other than GAAP. And now I want to show you guys how to use the internet to read upon special purpose frameworks and the reason why you want to incorporate use of the internet in your CPA exam study. To get to the page that you guys are now seeing, all I did was I went to Google and I typed in AICPA special purpose frameworks, and I looked specifically for the result that was coming directly from the AICPA. Now, the reason that you want to incorporate the use of internet searches is because what I found is, when I was studying just with using the courses, the courses didn't give me enough information. I was still very foggy in my understanding. But the best way to get some understanding is go, you know, go to the source. So I went to the source and I would read. And in reading, everything would just make so much more sense after reading like these little one pages that I would find from AICPA or PCAOB, or whatever I was searching. I would just read these documents and then I would go back and find whatever was listed in my course. And I would take, I would take the little exams, the practice exams, and usually I would get the questions right after that. So for me, this searching was a huge cheat code because it made, everything made so much more sense to me. So for you guys, I would want for you to come after you're done with this video and just do the search and actually read this one page and go back for yourself and see if things make a little bit more sense when you go back to your course. Next topic is the issuer versus non-issuer. So an issuer is a public entity that is required to file its financial statements with the Securities and Exchange Commission, the SEC, the man. These entities are regulated by the Public Company Accounting Oversight Board, the PCAOB, which was created under the Sarbanes-Oxley Act of 2002 to oversee public company audits to protect investors. The audit standards under the PCAOB begin with AS, followed by four digits. So the standard would be AS, digit, 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 digit. Also, I know you're wondering what the Sarbanes-Oxley Act of 2002 is, but no worries, I didn't forget to tell you. We will cover it in detail, but for now, just chill on not knowing exactly what it is. And if you already know what it is, then even better. A non- issuer is a non-public entity. The AICPA, American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, Auditing Standards Board, so the Auditing Standards Board of the AICPA issues statements on accounting standards that are applied to audits of non-issuers. The ASB standards for non- issuer audits begin with AU-C, followed by three digits. So AU-C, digit, digit, digit. Think of AU as auditing and the C as clarified because essentially, these standards are just the generally accepted auditing standards, which is GAAP, that have been clarified and recorded for easier reading, understanding, and interpreting. Okay, so the key thing that you need to know here is you need to remember that a non- issuer is a non-public entity and it falls under the regulation of the AICPA, which is less strict than the PCAOB, and that the non- issuer follows Auditing Standards Board statements on auditing standards, which are AU-C, digit, digit, digit. So think of it this way. Just remember that because a non- issuer falls under the AICPA, that, this is how I remembered in my head, I connected the As. So AICPA, the ASB for Auditing Standards Board, and the audits, the standards beginning with AU-C. So I just remembered that the A in AICPA, and the A in ASB, and the A in AU-C all went together. And that's how I remembered it. I just thought like, okay, A is at the beginning of the alphabet, and the non-issuers, they don't have to do a lot. So in the beginning is the least amount of work that you'll ever have to do. And it sounds weird, that's how I connected it. And to remember that issuers fall under PCAOB, I remembered that an issuer is a public entity, and public starts with P, so PCAOB. And then I remembered that P is at the end of the alphabet, and so it's, is pretty much so. The standards were AS, digit, 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 digit. Might help you, might not. Okay, so now back to the Sarbanes-Oxley Act of 2002. According to the bill posted on Congress website, the act was established to protect investors by improving the accuracy and reliability of corporate disclosures made pursuant to the securities, laws, and other purposes. So what I want you to do is to actually go and read the act, or to listen to it. And I'll show you where the act is found and why you need to go and read it. Okay guys, so if you do a Google search and you search Sarbanes-Oxley Act Bill, more than likely, you will see the website pop up for Congress with the bill, and that's how you'll get to this page that I'm on. Or if you're smarter than me, just copy what is in the address bar up here, congress.gov/bill. All of that, just copy it and go to it. But you wanna come here because here you can read the entire bill. You can read the summary, which is what I did, and I also listened to it a couple of times. But the reason that you wanna come here is because again, you wanna get the information from the source and not a third party because a source will always be able to tell you the information much, much better than you'll get it from someone else. It's almost like when you were a kid and you played the telephone game where the teacher told one person something, and by the time it got to the last person and they said it out loud, it was nothing that the teacher said. For me, that's kinda how like studying the CPA exam was because things were missing, like key pieces of information I was not getting out of my courses. So it was just easier for me to start doing my due diligence and reading online. So the internet is your friend. So here, you will read about the act and you'll see how it established the PCAOB. You can see why it was established and what the PCAOB does. And also, in reading this one page, you're going to get so many questions answered that are going to appear in your studies. So when you go back and you start answering questions surrounding like Sarbanes-Oxley, all your answers are right here. So if you read this, you're gonna find out about the audit partner rotation on a five-year basis. You're gonna find out about the mandate for free approval of the audit committee. Just a lot of different things that come up in the course, but they come up like randomly. I was finding that they were coming up randomly. So for me, as I said before, I'm a very linear thinker and learner. So being able to just read everything on this one page helped me out a lot. So do your due diligence and come on here and read or listen. If you click this little play button, you can listen to it while you're at work several times over. But you want to read it or listen to it several times over because repetition is gonna drill the information into you to the point that it's gonna be so simple for you to recall it because it's just, it's at the top of your head. And I will say that understanding the Sarbanes-Oxley Act is pivotal to passing audit. Reading the summary page of the act will assist you in having a solid base of understanding to build upon while studying audit. And after you've read or listened to the summary page, go back and research what prompted that. Find out the events that led up to Find out the events that led up to the need for the bill. And I promise you, it's probably the most exciting and scandalous accounting documentation you'll ever come by, so it'll be worth it. Maybe YouTube a few quick videos to learn what happened with Enron, Blockbuster, and Arthur Andersen. And it will make everything come together as far as why specific mandates were included in the Sarbanes-Osley Act. And just because I'm a nice person, I actually went and I found two videos for you guys to watch. So, I'm not going to play the videos, but I'm going to show you the videos so that you can like, take a screenshot. And just search the videos out on your own and watch them if you would like to. This is the first video. The video is by Coal Fusion. And the title is Enron, the Biggest Fraud in History. The video is only nineteen minutes long, but it'll give you a quick little summary of essentially what happened with Enron. That led up to the need for Sarbanes-Osley. And the next video is by the man himself, the SEC, the U.S. Securities and Exchange Commission. Did you guys know that they had a YouTube page? Because I didn't, I just found it when I was searching out um videos to show you guys. And it's in my video. But this video is by the U.S. Securities and Exchange Commission. And the title is What Did the Sarbanes-Osley Act Do? Office Hours with Gary Gensler. And the video is only three minutes, a little less than four minutes. But it's very well put together and I was actually thoroughly impressed with, you know, the video quality. They did a really good job of putting this video together. So your homework is your fun work, which is just to go back, YouTube the Enron scandal. Maybe watch the two videos that I picked out or watch videos on your own. But definitely, you know, do your research and find out about Blockbuster. And how Blockbuster was on its way to be what Netflix is today, but it just didn't happen. And also find out about the shady characters involved with the Enron scandal. And as always, I'm gonna leave you guys with my anchor scripture, scripture. Um, which is just the whole reason for while making this video. Essentially, making these videos to make understanding the CPA exam and how to pass plane. So that you guys may watch my videos and run off and pass much faster than I ever did. And always remember that above all things, that God is dope. See ya, well, not see you, you guys get what I mean. Bye.